Good evening. Welcome to the October 14th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have appeal number 2021-001-559-Baconic LLC. Thank you. Evening, Mr. Cuddy.
Charles Cuddy for the applicant, 599 Conic LLC. With me tonight is Sandra DeVando, who is the member and owner, and also Doug Adams from Young &amp; Young. This has been before you a number of months ago. In the meantime, we were getting a DEC permit, and I'd like to offer up to begin the meeting, a copy of the DEC permit and also a copy of the CAC permit. The reason I offer those up is because that often is the significant variance that people look for because of the bayfront. In each instance, both the CAC from the town and the state DEC found that 45.2 feet was the correct rear yard distance. And so eventually, I will ask the board to adopt that as the distance that this home should be set back. Also, for the record, I'd point out to you that we have county Department of Health Services' approval forthcoming, probably within the next week. We've submitted everything to them that they require. This home basically is set along the lines of the existing house, which is a small sideyard, although the home is still set back 45.2 feet. And the home itself is 2,700 square feet, has no basement, includes a one-car garage. There's a shed that was originally there, it's still there, it's going to be removed, that's going to reduce the coverage by 288 square feet. So the lot coverage is going to be reduced from 19.9 to 18.3. The house has three bedrooms. The area in the house probably will use for some storage because with a one-car garage with no shed there, it's going to be very limited as to what can be done in that house because it's not that large. Looking a little bit closer at this site, as you can see, it's in an R40 district, and yet it's only 18,000 square feet. It's 60 feet wide, which makes the design and layout somewhat difficult. So the house is placed, again, as often happens, right where the existing house is. And the pool and the poolhouse are placed on the far side. And the far side of this parcel is the Beach Civic Association, and basically, it's a foliage-type lot with a path through it going to the beach, so there's really nothing on that side. I think if you look at the design that's been completed by the architect, by Stuart Phillips, you can see that there's not a lot of room to move things around. The house is placed in a position where it's close to the line, but it allows the pool to be placed on the far side. And I would like to offer up from Mr. Phillips, a statement as to how he designed and laid out this house and why he did it the way it is. When you look at the combination of the house, the pool, the deck, and the garage, there's very little else that can be done to make this a meaningful combination, and I think that's what he's done. And I think under the state town code, that, the state law, excuse me, and also adopted as the town code, that this meets the standards of really no undesirable change in a neighborhood. There's no adverse environmental impact from having a house there, and there basically is no serious alternative. And I think that's what is pointed out in Mr. Phillips's letter. I remember from reading some of the prior comments that there were concerns expressed by neighbors as to the setbacks, and surprisingly, I guess one of the neighbors thought it should be set back 60 feet, even though the CAC and the DEC say it should be set back 45.2 feet. Apparently, the same owner from the neighboring property thought that the house should be put in a different location altogether. That makes it somewhat difficult to imagine how the house could really be meaningful without a pool. The septic system would be completely arranged, disarranged, actually. And they have requested that the side yard be 10 feet in from where it is presently. That doesn't make any sense to me because I have a picture, an overhead picture of the site, and the side yards for this neighbor are the same east and west. So in one place, it's 36 feet, the other, it's 35. So we think we're set back exactly where we should be. And I'd just like to offer that overhead picture also. And I also understand that there was a concern with the condensers, the air conditioning condensers. And that I find somewhat hard to believe, but if the air conditioning condensers are a problem, then the pool location is exactly in the right place.
So, Mr. Cuddy, I'm a little confused about the setback. You're saying that the Conservation Advisory Council and the DEC recommend 45-foot setback?
Yes.
And why would they recommend that one if it would be a detriment to be closer to the water when it could be back further than 60 feet? Tell me why that happened. How did that happen? What was presented?
Well, we originally had a setback that was 29 feet.
Okay.
And so we were closer. The neighbor, by the way, is 36 feet.
I see that.
And so because we were 29, we moved back 16 feet. So now we're at 45.2.
So you're 45.
Yes.
And 60.
Yes, but we were at 29.
Now, the neighbor next door, is that the architect?
Yes.
That is also a concern about. So realizing that, I think there's other objections as far as the height of the structure as well, and the pool location.
Well, let me explain. I think that her architect, Mr. Phillips, explained that putting the pool where he did was away from that side, that is, from that neighbor's side, and it was important to have it at that location.
So the argument would be away from the neighbor's side?
That's right.
And on the side where there'll be no development, other than the right-of-way that people use that live in that area?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
And what harm would it be if you put it in the so-called front yard?
Because I think it would be just closer to the neighbor at that point.
Because they are going to have a pool house, right?
They're going to have a small pool house, a 90-foot-square pool house in back of the.
So the pool house where you're showing the location would be where the pool is, but if you moved the pool to the front or the backyard, the front yard, it would still be very close to that. So the alternatives were that there were some proposals provided to us based on what the neighbor had suggested, and we looked at them and we kind of liked them. And we were even inclined to maybe possibly go to the option two, which you're quite sure you saw that.
But it does create a great problem because it creates, and I think Mr. Phillips explained that, but one of the problems right away, if you look at your map, is with the survey, is that the septic system is completely out of line at that point.
Okay, but what about the new alternative septic systems? You know, the new ones?
Well, even if we have those, Mr. Adams is here and he can explain to you the type of system.
So you can't use the hydro-action system?
Well, he can explain that better than I can.
I would like to hear that, thank you. Because I know they're going to be required by, what, July 1st, Doug?
Uh, yes, it was.
Were you sworn in before?
Excuse me?
Sworn in.
No, he hasn't been sworn in on this case.
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Douglas Adams, 400 Ostrander Avenue, doing business. This application was submitted to the Health Department prior to July 1st, so they recognize, just to speak on the IA issue, if applications were submitted prior to July 1st, I forget the exact date of this original submission, that they were sort of going to be going by the standards that were adopted prior to that. So this doesn't require an IA system by the Health Department.
It doesn't require it, but we could, if it helps rearranging some of the structures that will satisfy.
Yeah, Hydroaction System is actually bigger than this, than this system. It would make the system bigger. Hydroaction has two chambers, so it basically would double the size of what you see here as an ST or the septic tank.
How many pools are you showing here, Doug, on their survey?
On this survey?
Yeah, on the current proposed survey of the structure.
Six pools and three future expansion pools.
Okay. And those pools, you know what the depths are? Are they stacked, four-foot stacked, or are they individual?
No, they're going to be two feet, I believe. They have two-foot effective depth.
Okay. Because I'm not sure what the water depth is there, unless I look at the test hole.
Groundwater is at one.
Okay. But the new systems are self-contained? And they do have to have maintenance, and I know they're more expensive. I get all that.
Yeah, so in a nutshell, the new systems, with the system you're looking at here, the only difference would be, instead of having a conventional septic tank, you'd have an IOWTS, the treatment system, but you would still have the leaching pools. So the only thing that would be replaced is a septic tank with a Fuji or a Hydroaction or a Noriko or whatever these ones are approved, which generally take up a little more space than this septic tank. Fuji, for example, would take up about the same Hydroaction as two chambers, so it takes up about twice as much space as a septic tank, but the discharge to groundwater is the same. It's just that what's going into those has less nitrogen in it, basically.
So, I mean, so you're claiming that it would affect the redesign of the property as it's laid out?
Sure, it would take up more space and with the, you know, you're talking about putting the pool in the backyard, front yard, basically towards where the garage, the proposed garage is.
Well, that is the front yard.
Yeah, the front yard. We'd have to move the sanitary system further towards Conic Bay Boulevard, which becomes a problem because then you're chasing the gravity flow of the system from the house and it gets deeper and stuff. So we'd have to do a pretty good rearrange here to get that to fit in there.
But that also includes that the house is 45, and if it was set back 60, we'd be closer to the system further back. These are the things that people are arguing in the neighborhood, the residents. That's their concerns. We are listening to their concerns. So I wanted you to be aware that that's, those are out there right now. So, but whatever, continue with the presentation, I guess.
Thank you. I think what we're saying to you is that we believe that the way the house is set up here is the appropriate way to have the house and not to move the house back, not to move the house in. It creates a lot of issues, and that's exactly what's being said by Mr. Phillips's letter to you, that he tried to do what the owner wanted to do, which is to have, not a great house, it's 2,700 square feet, but it's not huge. And he was trying to have a place where he could put a pool, where there could be a pool that was not fenced in in a strange way, and also could be visible from the house. So I think that's, he accomplished that. And I think it's not unusual at all to have a house placed where there was an existing house. It's done quite frequently. I've been in a number of matters, not in this town, but in the adjoining town, where we've done exactly that.
So?
We placed it right where the house was on the line.
The neighbor, Charlie, is also an architect and a design professional. He's claiming that, and he gave some alternative drawings. He's claiming that would work. So now we're getting the neighbor's version, we're getting your version, and I'm not sure where we're going with all this, but I think we need to talk to people in this field as well.
I understand, but I would hope that the neighbor doesn't tell the owner how to build the house or where to build the house. I mean, I can understand people being concerned.
He was giving alternatives. I don't think he was trying to tell him what to build.
Well, I think essentially, that's what was being done from reading the transcript.
Okay, well, I guess that you can interpret it that way.
But I believe that this is appropriate the way it's laid out, and I ask you again to make sure that you consult the letter from Mr. Phillips, because I think he explained that unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight because he had another meeting, but...
Fully understood. The other thing is that some of the neighbors keep complaining, or were complaining, that it was put out on VRBO for rentals. So that's not happening anymore, right? I mean, I don't follow it.
It's not happening, and in fact, it actually didn't happen.
So it never happened, even though there was an advertisement?
There were people there. But these were people that had a relationship to the owner, and some of them were employees, and some of them were people that related to those people, and they were there for two reasons. One, they were there, they had a short summer vacation time, and secondly, they were there because of COVID.
So I'm just wondering, I mean, I remember one of the neighbors telling me that it had VRBO, and it was listed. I'd say right there.
But the answer is, it's not happening. It's not going to happen, and this is a house that's being built so she can live in it.
I can't really tell from that. It just, they found it on the website, and they told me, I didn't see it myself personally.
To answer your question, though, it's not going to be that way, and it's not intended to be that way.
Well, a lot of people say that to me, and then it comes out to be something else anyway.
Hopefully, what I'm saying is to you...
It happens a lot. Like, they're not going to finish the upstairs of a garage, and it turns out to be an apartment all the time.
Well, actually, we took down the breezeway, by the way, as part of this.
I think someone would like to speak.
This is the owner right here, so she can also answer.
Oh, let's hear it.
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
My name and my address, Sandra DeVando, and my address is 599 Conic Bay Boulevard.
So you live there full-time now?
No, no, right now, no, because it's a summer cottage. It has been hit.
What's your address now?
130 West 79th Street.
Okay, thank you.
In Manhattan.
Write that down.
So I just want to clarify, because, yeah, I mean...
I'm just kidding.
Right after the pandemic, yes, I did advertise and rented the cottage, unfortunately to me, because I was unable to enjoy it in the summer, because I had to make ends meet, and I have to, my business, I have a business in Southampton, and I have a business in the city, and my business completely shut down for two months. So it was a way to do what I had to do. But after that, you know, I took it out of VMVO, and I haven't rented it. This summer, I did, like Charles said, there were a couple of people while I was away, and they were my employees from a long time, and I wanted them to enjoy the house because, you know, it was just a very nice treat for them. And so I intend to live there, you know, within a couple of years, and I'm a very honest, transparent person, so I wouldn't say I wanted to do this and I'm okay with it. And I love this property. I have been, this is the third property I own in Conic Bay Boulevard. I own in 31 Bay Harbor Road, so I paid the tax there. Then I moved to next door, to 27 Bay Harbor Road, because the neighbors convinced us instead of building, to buy the house. So we bought the house. But I always said, you know, I want to be across, I want to be across the bay. And then when this property came for sale, so I bought it. So that's how bad I want to be here. I have had three properties within that...
Do you still have the other properties?
No, I sold them.
So you sold them all, and you're focusing on this one? Okay.
I mean, I want to build my family home. My kids are 15 and 12, and we have a one-and-a-half-bedroom cottage, so. All I think that what I'm asking is to have just a nice-sized home, it's not huge, with a nice pool, and that I can enjoy with my family. I mean, we were very careful as to, what Stuart had said, to be careful about the neighbors, about the size, the height of the house. We have done studies, and we, you know, comply with everything that makes sense for the environment. What I do for a living is floral design, and the design, so I'm very much inspired by nature, respect nature, and, I mean, it's just, it's important for me to have a nice environment. So I just wanted to clarify the VRBO, because I did rent it two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get back to say, if there are any additional questions, we'd be pleased to answer them or have them answer.
Well, I think the board has a lot to talk about, and we think, well, at least I think that we have to do a little more homework on what we're proposing. We were hoping you were coming back with an alternative plan, because the initial plan was not acceptable to us, and that's why they hired you, because they saw it wasn't going where they wanted it to go, and I get that. But we also may want to consider that there has to be an alternative possible. I want to do, at least on my part, due diligence and find out certain things that will satisfy me. But you have to keep an open mind that we may ask for an alternative solution. If not, we'll just deny it, or at least I will make a motion to deny it, to force a redesign. So I would rather see something we can compromise and work out together for the future.
We would be pleased to certainly work that way.
Well, I think we could, but we have to do a little more homework on it now. Since you, we really did expect you to come with a different proposal. I did. I don't know what they expected, but I expected something a little different.
No, we did.
You knew where it was going. You knew that it was going to not be approved the way it originally was set.
I didn't know that, but you're now telling me.
Well, you do now, I guess.
You're telling me now.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. Just letting you know how I feel.
Okay. And I just, that's why I wanted you just to look at his letter to say why he was doing it this way.
I'm going to look at everything.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else to be heard in this room? Please step up. Take your time.
Hi, my name is...
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Just state your name and your address.
John Torborg at 591 Conic Bay Boulevard. We are next door to this applicant. My name is John Torborg, and with my wife Connie. We reside at 591 Conic Bay Boulevard. We are owners, and we're also architects. We have our own business, and we've had our business for 30 years. Seven months after a zoning board meeting, a similar meeting with fair and reasonable public comments, there has been no modification to this proposal by the applicant. I find this unresponsive to neighbor concerns. I find it disregard to the zoning rules, that guide planning, and I also find it lacks respect for the zoning board. The width of the site is too narrow for what is proposed. Placing a pool 4.7 feet from the association's property, property that 17 families access and have the right to, is not fair relief. A building over five times the massing area of the bungalow and placing it 3.2 feet from our property line, that's not fair relief. 3.2 feet, it doesn't allow construction, it doesn't allow maintenance of a building. Servicing and storage would be forced onto our property. You have diagrams that I did send. I'll just show them. I know they're entered into the record. From the get-go, this representation of the setback at 45.2 feet was not accurate in that it didn't really represent the second-floor projection into that rear yard. I understand that that is a physical obstruction is to be counted. So while we're told by Mr. Phillips that they moved the house back 17 feet, you have to remember that then they pushed out the second floor, 6.5 feet, six foot, six inches, and to hold that, they have columns that are probably two feet wide with a diagonal, and it leaves the possibility of an infill. So I think the record should be corrected to show that that, you know, that second-floor projection is less than what they represent. I think that should have been corrected for the record. That was something that I would like to show.
I think you submitted that, though, didn't you?
I think we did, yeah, I did.
Yes, we have that submission, I believe.
Yes. We don't oppose the size of the house. Obviously, the house is designed to accommodate Sandra's purpose. We do oppose the placement. That it is, it's massive, as he said, it's strung out in a kind of a vertical position, and it is very much taller, and its massiveness is very much larger, and that's another, just a diagram, I think, that you had seen as well.
We had that.
We feel the rear yard should comply. The impact of the massing on a very, very unique site, Simmons Point is a very unique site, it's shared not just by us, it's shared by the associations, it's shared by everyone on that beach, and I think we have to be very careful to see what is allowed for this addition. I think adding added structures to an already overbuilt site should not be allowed as well. The additional garage, the pool house, I think the curvious surface is a very serious thing, and that we should take that as a rule and follow it as well. And in my experience, again, is kind of from the first presentation, that as an architect, when we're designing a project, we follow the law, we follow the rules. That becomes a design challenge. That becomes to the architect, let me follow the rules the best I can to accommodate the program, and only when I cannot do that. And times that you cannot do that for various reasons. I mean, it's absurd to suggest you're going to keep 25-foot side yards and you're going to have a seven-foot white house. You're not going to, I mean, it's stupid to say that. You're not going to do that. So the objective of a designer, of a good designer, is to follow the law... is to follow the law, follow the rules, no matter where they are. And when you cannot do that any further, then you come to the zoning board and you say, this is a fair objection, I need to do this. And I think this is one of these situations where design concepts have not been adequately pursued. And I think that in this particular instance, I understand as a designer, I understand what the intent Philip had. He essentially was taking a very unique site, it's a totally unique site. And he's saying that I want to put on that site a very active use, a pool in what essentially is a side yard. Side yard is typically a shared yard between two neighbors. It's sort of a quiet space. I want to put a very active space right up to the association's lot line. I want to activate that. I want to move the house back onto our property that can be serviced. And therefore, my kind of, I claim ownership by orientation of this Simmons Point view. And I understand it, but it is not fair. It's not fair relief. It's not fair to the neighbors and it's going to be something that I think forever will be on Simmons Point. And I do ask the zoning board to look at this very seriously before they grant permission for this project. Thank you.
That used to go. Anyone else to be heard? Please step up. Have you kindly raised your right hand, Mr. Torborg? Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please, just state your name and your address.
Constance Torborg, five nine one Pecanic Bay Boulevard. I'll be brief. I do want to say that in response to something Cuddy said, no adverse effect, no alternative. Well, I beg to differ. This massive wall, it's obviously very tight to our property line. I always, I brought up the condensers before. They violate the setback. The machinery is unattractive. I think it could be placed somewhere else. In fact, Mr. Phillips said in the last meeting, we are actually open to considering alternative locations for these. But there have been no changes and today I hear that it's not being considered. Small detail, you know, there have been property stakes in the property for some time now. You can look down them and see where the line is. And yet Sandra keeps her kayak on our property. It's literally on our property. I know it's tight, but it's not that tight. I questioned the pool. If the pool, if the choice was between no pool or pool in the front yard, I think the owner could overcome the subject issue and find a solution. I think that there's been no consideration of the community's concerns. This is, I think this has been dragged out to attempt to get everything they want. There's a non-negotiating attitude here. As I said before, we are, we have reasonable feelings about, you know, build a house, but you don't need to build all these buildings and I think you could move the pool. I do want to say that if you've owned four, three houses and this is your fourth house in seven years, because that's what was in the record, I really wonder whether you're perhaps a developer. I don't know, but it's really bizarre to me. In terms of the verbo dates, they were accurate. They were blocked out, which meant that it had been rented. So, because I looked at it, when someone told me about it, I began to check it and I see where the dates were blocked out. I think that if she moves on and she goes on to the next project and she cashes in on this, you know, Simmons Point, the rest of the association, the people on the beach will have to live with this house for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Please step up. Have you kindly raised your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
I'm Helen Horton. I live at five ninety-six Pecanic Bay Boulevard, directly across the street from this property in question, five ninety-nine Pecanic Bay Boulevard. A couple of issues. I want to support and uphold what Connie Torborg just said. Our neighborhood collaboration is fantastic. Mr. Cuddy referred to the neighbor foliage. We are the Beach Harbor Civic Association. We have twenty lots in our association and seventeen owners. Three lots are still vacant. So we do have seventeen owners of homes who have a vested interest in this application. Out of the seventeen, we have seven of us here today. So I'm just commenting on the other people.
Sure.
Sitting there, okay. This is the map from Google Earth that was in the packet of forty pages for the application. And my home is right on the corner at the curve, the other side of the street. And I'm sure you all are aware of that corner where there's a guardrail and many accidents. I can't tell you how many times I hear crash right into the guardrail. And it happens sometimes in daylight even, often at night. It especially happens when it's raining. What happens when it's raining? The water literally is across the road all the way from that property to my property. There is no pavement showing. I will say the town of Riverhead does come, well, maybe two, two times a year with this massive equipment and does blow out the pipe that goes underneath the water and clears the drain. So then the water all drains. But that's only after the road has been flooded. So you can guess which variance I'm addressing. It says here nineteen point nine. If I heard Mr. Cuddy correctly, it's now what, eighteen? Eighteen point three, where the maximum is fifteen for very good reason. By changing the impermeability and raising it, what is it going to do? Cause more flooding. And it's, I just consider that, what's the word? Because there are already so many accidents there because of the flooding and anyway because of the curve. So that is one point that I'm addressing that I really hope the board will take into consideration that to raise that from fifteen percent, even one tenth of a percent, is just absolutely inexcusable. Any questions on what I said?
You're fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the other neighbors? Mr. Cuddy, you have anything to say?
Just to address the very last item here, I can appreciate the fact that no one wants to have a dangerous intersection. But any water that comes from our site has to be maintained on our site, has to be retained. And we've made, as you can see.
T A C.
Some deep dry wells at the very point that she's talking about to take care of the water. Certainly, I can't imagine that something that's going to travel two hundred feet on, where it's all grass at that point, is going to add to the street water. It's already been there. I don't think we're going to add anything to it by having back another hundred fifty, two hundred feet of garage. I'm also concerned that people are talking about garages and pools as if they just shouldn't be around because they're just too much. These are amenities that many people have. Many people who have homes right on the bay have pools. I'm troubled by the fact that all of a sudden they have become something that we just throw out and say because they're accessory uses, you don't need them. I think many people do need garages and a lot of people have pools. So I don't see the, you just throw those things out. Again, I believe that this was done in a sense that it used the right type of house for this particular parcel. Now, you're going to move the house over. I'm not sure what that really does, but Mr. Torborg seems to think that that's going to solve everything. You still have variances, by the way. No matter where you put this house, there's a variance that's required. So all you're doing is just reducing maybe the size of the variances, but that's all. And I think that just to say that move it back, move it over is an interesting point because you could do that with nearly every application. Move it some way that doesn't bother us is what I hear. And I think that's unfair to the applicant. Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Obviously, we have some digging to do. Lee Roy, you have any other comments?
Not at the moment. I certainly said my piece. I'd certainly like to look at alternative solutions if possible. And I may have to ask or seek out professional help, people that are in the field. But that's something the board, I think, should do as a board. I would recommend that we, I don't want to say let's adjourn it for two weeks. I'd rather have a little more time to figure out what we can or cannot do.
Okay, let's make it a month.
So.
What's the meeting? The first in November?
November tenth is Wednesday.
So what we're saying is by November tenth, we'll do our due diligence and we'll see if there's an alternative. I'm quite sure what Doug is saying is probably accurate, but there could be alternative solutions. We're going to look into that. Fair enough? Okay.
Okay, so let's move this to November tenth. Who's got it?
So Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move this particular case, which is known as twenty, no, that's not it. I move, um, appeal twenty twenty-one oh one, five ninety-nine Pecanic L C. Be adjourned to November tenth.
Any seconds. All right, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see you folks November tenth. Hopefully, we can come up with a solution. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming in.
You don't have to wait, just go right into it.
How can the board find somebody that? Can we hire somebody?
Hey.
Or find somebody?
I can. And of course, every time I go to the doctors, they gotta test me for freaking COVID. Oh, Christ, I got those goddamn swabs in my, in my brain. She's going to reference that.
I got everything laid in here.
She just submitted this.
Oh.
For this upcoming hearing.
Oh, this one? Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll keep, yeah, okay. I had the same thing, but we. I don't think this is all. Folks, if you don't mind, can you take the chatter outside? We have another appeal to take care of. Thank you very much.
Appeal twenty twenty-one zero four four, Michelle Schleifelder, two thirty-three West Woodland Drive, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred fifty-five three one, R B eighty zoning for variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, section twenty-nine eight two, where a six-foot fence in front yard is not permitted.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Well, then kindly state your name and your address.
Amy DeVito, Wood Hall Expediting with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York.
You have the floor, young lady.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My client is legalizing a six-foot, a six-foot PVC fence, which is located in their secondary front yard. The fence is installed to enclose the flattest area of the rear yard for privacy and safety for their family. They have young children. There is a lot of topography on this property and this area functions as what's really their only usable rear yard. And I'm sure you've all seen this before. This is very common with corner lots where the secondary front yard functions as part of the rear yard. So this is not actually uncommon on this particular type of lot. And these corner lots are unique in nature and this particular lot is even further unique because of the topography. And there is an actual drop off in the true rear yard, which, with a retaining wall, which creates a really shallow area for them to enjoy. So we are requesting relief of the code this evening so that the six-foot PVC fence could remain in the secondary front yard. I do want to just note that on the survey that was submitted, the fence actually encroaches into the town right of way slightly. It has since been moved. I just haven't received the updated survey yet. So the fence is now exactly on the property line and no longer encroaching in the town right of way. Another reason why the fence was erected was because they are going to be probably this coming spring applying for a in-ground swimming pool. So we actually may be back before you because I suspect we will be requesting relief to put it in the front yard as well. But as with all pool applications, we do need to have pool fence to code. I submitted to Carissa some similar grants that we found for this type of relief and some photos for the board to take a look at. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the audience that has any problems with this matter? Do I hear a reading?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I move that the appeal of Michelle Schleifelder.
Schleifelder.
Schleifelder. Nobody can pronounce my name right now, don't worry about it. Two thirty-three West Woodland Drive, C T M number six hundred dash five five dash three dash one, R B eight zero zoning for variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, section two nine eight subdivision two, where six-foot fence in front of front yard is not permitted be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. I make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire, I'm sure would say aye, but he's not here. Mr. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I say aye.
Not two.
So your appeals been granted and we'll see you in the spring with the pool.
Yes, it appears so. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
And thank you for your patience.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Well, I think we have a all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, we have other business. Mostly monkey.
Appeal number twenty eighteen zero four six.
I'd like to make a motion that we reopen said hearing.
No, I'm just concerned, I wanted to double check. I think that mine has three unharmed.
It does.
So we don't have, I don't know.
We don't have that.
But it's unanimous now.
We're going to go next time.
We have a court, right?
We have a court, I mean.
Let me see, let's have a look quick.
It's not like we haven't tied up in the men's room. Oh, you're involved for it, ain't it? Well, we're simply opening the hearing, reopening a hearing.
I think though it takes, let me just say.
It also would require that they pay for the posting and the legal notice and it has to be reposted, as we all agree to that. And this is with respect to the property in, where is it, Carissa?
This is twenty-nine Front Street.
Twenty-nine Front Street.
This is Jamesport.
In Jamesport, this is South Jamesport, correct? So essentially what the board's trying to do is reopen a hearing.
All members then present, so you're good.
Okay.
You are correct, Ms. Connie.
A second to motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, let's take a vote.
Okay, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. One and all.
Thank you.